Uh, it's a town office February ninth, two thousand twenty-three. It's six P M. I'd like to call the order. Uh, board member roll call.
Angie Rollin.
Jamie Percy.
Bob Jarvis.
Ryan Harris.
Mike Gardner. Approval of the agenda and on the agenda, I have. Uh, some additions tonight, please. I need to add a forensic audit update. Uh, I need to add, um. An informational, um. Situation about the, uh, water situation in the panel of states formerly Alta Gardens. Uh, and I need to add a liquor license. Please, so I'd like to add the audit. And the water situation after we do warrants. And the liquor license after we do excess weight permits.
Motion to approve with changes.
Well, let me go through the rest of it. Public comment, approval minutes. Um, audit water, uh, warrants, correspondence, excess weight permits, liquor license. Friends will short presentation five to ten minutes. Solomon Roy Library new director introduction. Um, P twenty-seven large gathering permit application, public comment and adjourn. With the changes?
With changes, yes.
Uh, any more discussion? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike, aye. Uh, so open up the public comment, Hannah, if there is any. Okay. Approval of minutes, minutes of January twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three select board meeting. Any corrections, additions, comments? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
abstain wasn't here.
Mike, aye. Warrants, accounts payable two, three, twenty-three, seventeen thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-eight cents.
So moved.
Uh, any questions, comments? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike, aye. Accounts payable P V one upgrade two, five, twenty-three, fifty-three thousand, five ninety-eight. Uh, five hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty cents.
So moved.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike, aye. Accounts payable Newtown Hall, uh, February fourth, twenty-three, fourteen thousand, five seventeen, fifty-eight.
So moved.
Uh, any questions, comments? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike, aye. Payroll two, three, twenty-three, fourteen thousand, six hundred and thirty-nine dollars and forty-eight cents.
So moved.
Uh, any questions, comments, all those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike abstain. Payroll two, ten, twenty-three. Uh, eleven thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars and two cents.
So moved.
All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike, aye. Accounts payable two, ten, twenty-three, thirty thousand and six, nine hundred and sixty-nine dollars and thirty cents.
So moved.
Questions, comments, all those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike, aye. Um, is Rebecca in, yeah?
Hi.
Rebecca, um, we, we set it up, I don't know if you know, we set it up the audit first, the forensic audit update first.
Okay, great. Um. Well, it is my absolute pleasure to come and give this update because as we all know, this has been. What, four, three, four years at this point ongoing, um. Uh, just for background, in case people are watching this, um, meeting several, several years ago. Um, uh, internal auditors and, um, a select board member or two. Came to the board with what they believed to be finding some nefarious things. Uh, the board at the time hired a forensic auditor to perform this thing and it went on forever. Um, we weren't able to talk about it for many of those years, just because it was in essentially legal jeopardy. However, we've been much more open about it. We had to hire a second forensic auditor to. Correct portions, um, of his quote findings. And one of the things that happened in this entire, uh, thing is, um. We filed a complaint with the state of Vermont, the Office of Professional Regulation. And that they did bring charges against him. And there was a hearing, um, I testified, we presented all of the evidence and I received all of the findings today. And, um. I am, I'm very pleased to announce that everything we asserted was found to be true. Um, I want to read a couple aspects of this, just so everyone knows specifically, I think I'm really glad to see Ellen is there today, actually. Ellen, um, because this really had a very negative impact on her. This entire thing and I just, the more people that know about this outcome, the better for all of us.
Rebecca, just one, one thing before you go, before you go any further.
Sure.
I, I want to be absolutely clear that these findings were given to you. To, to the town today. We, um, to today, we had no prior knowledge of any of these findings. Uh, up until, um, today.
I got this this afternoon, which is why I had you at it. I didn't want to wait. I wanted to make sure this hit a public meeting and that this was all of this. I'm not, I'm obviously not going to read the entire docket, but I'm, I have highlighted some parts that I would like to make sure are read into the record and are being read at a public meeting. Um, so again, this is from the state of Vermont, the Office of Professional Regulation. That means that. Um, it's, it's a hearing, not a trial, but he is essentially tried by a board of his peers. So this was, this entire case was evaluated by professional accountants that serve on this board. And it was prosecuted by a lawyer, obviously. Um, and so the conclusions are that he is in three different violations. Um, and I'm going to summarize them. So violation one. The evidence established that the respondent committed unprofessional conduct. And violated V S A section one twenty-nine A B one, failure to practice competently. By reason of any cause, including unacceptable client care. Um, regarding incident one, the response, that incident one is the town of panel, there was another complainant as well. Um, regarding incident one, the respondent failed to perform his obligations under the contract with the town of panel in terms of the timing of his performance. The respondent's failure to satisfy specific tasks for which he was obligated. The ambiguity created by his contract and his eventual report, both of which created a disparity. Between the expectation of the town and the perceived obligation by the respondent. And the failure of the respondent to seek and secure written modification of the scope of work. Um, it goes on and on, um, I'm going to skip to. Sorry. That's actually the conclusion, um. Sorry, it's all a mess. The. Violation number two, the evidence establishes that the respondent committed unprofessional conduct and violated three V S A section one twenty-nine. A B two as well, failure to practice competently. Um, regarding incident one, the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants has developed. Professional standards for certified public accountants, which are set forth in the statement on standards of attestation agreements. And those are essential standards of acceptable and prevailing practice in the profession. It was determined he did not meet any of those standards. Um. Violation number three. Is, um. Is the same section of statute, but it's one twenty-nine A B fifteen, failing to exercise independent professional judgment. In the performance of licensed activities when that judgment is necessary to avoid action repugnant to the obligations of the profession. So. I mean, it goes into details here. This is a public document. I've given it to you for your packets. And then they did, um, charge him and they ordered, here are the orders in accordance with the findings, in fact, of conclusion of law. The board does order that the respondent, so that is, that is Mr. Graham, or the forensic auditor. Um, right to renew his license is indefinitely suspended. So he had allowed his license to, um, lapse last year, uh. And, um, he is now no longer to renew his license. Um, so if he had still had his license, it likely would have been taken from him. Um, he has also been ordered to pay a fine of one thousand dollars to the state. Um, he does have a right of appeal. I don't know if that will happen or not. Um, but it's pretty definitive. And what I found really interesting about this is that because this was. This isn't, uh, the town of panel against Jeffrey Graham. This is the state of Vermont against Jeffrey Graham. And it was a board of accountants who brought these charges and evaluated his work. And evaluated his quote unquote final report, which is where all of our objections were. We received a lot of really nasty conjecture regarding that. And it just feels really good to come here and be able to report to you that all of our suspicions, our concerns, the reasons why we held everything back. For quite some time, the reason why we had to remain tight lipped, all of it was, um, validated and corrected and it's correct, so. Um, it's just, it's like a, uh, this is one of the very first things I ever worked on in working for the town. So it feels, it feels like we finally arrived somewhere. So if anyone has any questions for me, um. I'm happy to answer them. Uh, but you know, it may not be, he may appeal, but, um, ultimately this is a really great outcome.
So, uh, 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 yeah, can I chime in?
Sure, Bob.
Sure, uh, so one thing I want to say is, uh, uh, thank you Rebecca, that really excellent work. We wouldn't have got to this point. Without, uh, without her detail and without her follow-up on all of it. Um, uh, and, and secondly, I think we, we do need to explore what that means in terms of. Uh. In terms of cost to our taxpayers. I think our taxpayers paid a lot of money. For actually a negative outcome. It, it created havoc in panel. This created a whole lot of, of finger pointing and conjecture. And, uh, and undermining of individuals who absolutely didn't deserve it. I think we need to, uh, I would suggest that we talk to Bob, uh, our lawyer. And see what, uh, if we have any other courses of remediation.
I can do that if the board wishes me to do that.
So I, I want to, I want to strengthen your point, Bob. I was not involved in the, uh. Initial part of the, the hiring and the, and the forensic audit. I want to say that, that this board. Because we're all the same members minus Ronnie, but you were on, uh, on the initial hire, Brian was, okay? We took some pretty major abuse about why we were so tight lipped about this. Um. And obviously we were tight lipped because we as a board. Felt that, that what the town of panel, not the board, we're, we, we. It's not what the board got from the forensic audit. It was what the town of panel was getting for the, for the money that was being spent.
Correct.
We, we did, we were tight lipped. We had to be tight lipped. We, we couldn't bring this out. Um. In public until now, to be honest with you, till today. Um, what, what our stance was, our stance was totally justified. We, we knew that. Just in the, in the meetings that, that we'd had with, with various people and, and our own lawyer. Um, so it is great work. It's really good news. It certainly doesn't take away, um, the. Stigmatism that are put on some town employees. It, it's, it's not going to, it will, it will never remove that. But there is a little bit of vindication, um, if you ask me about, about what happened. Um. So, I, I totally agree with Bob. I think we should pursue legally, um. What are, what are, um, options at this point? We've already spent a lot of money on it. Um, but I'd, I'd like to see if we can recuperate some of that money.
Yep.
That, that we spent.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
And just to remind the public that we've spent close to a hundred thousand dollars on this matter. If you're including what you've paid me to work on this. If you're including, we had to hire a second forensic auditor to correct what we knew were false allegations and unqualified allegations that would have. Really ruined someone. Um, which we absolutely had the moral imperative to do. Uh, you know, so that it's no, it's not a small amount of money. Um, and so I'm, I, I'd like to pursue with passive as well. We have had our legal fees covered recently. Maybe this is open for that. Um, now that there's actually a judgment, we might be able to be able to recoup some of these costs and I, you know, I can start investigating all that for you guys and come back to the next meeting. With some ideas.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments?
I just want to point out that, uh, I, it wasn't our choice to remain silent about this.
No.
Legal matter and we were legally bound to remain silent until, until it was a duty.
Yep.
I'll entertain a motion to, um, have Rebecca reach out to Bob Fisher. And, and see where we stand with this situation.
I'll make that motion. I'll make a motion that we authorize Rebecca to reach out to Bob Fisher and explore our, our legal options on remediation.
Second.
Any more discussion, comments, questions? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike willingly, for sure.
Okay, great.
Thanks Rebecca.
Thank you.
I'll be back.
Well, yeah, you're, you're up right now with the water, so keep going.
Oh, we're doing it right now? Oh, okay, great. All right, hold on.
Get it done.
All right.
So, so let me, I, I went up, so we've, we've been dealing with this again for, excuse me, the, the, a, a water situation, a potential water situation again. Uh, um, panel of states formerly Alta Garden Estates. Fred Miller came to me on last week, I believe. I, I don't remember the days, they all run together now. Um, Fred and I met here, he's working on a case down there as well. Um, so. I'm going to let Rebecca take it from here, but this is, um, because, because we've been. Things have been out in the paper and I want the general public to know that we haven't pushed it away. As we've been accused of doing, so here's, here's where we're at.
All right, so I, I apologize, a lot of this is maybe out of order, but I'm just going to go through the notes that I sent you. Um, I spent the day on this issue. Um, aside from when I got the, uh, docket from the forensic audit judgment. Um, and, um, so I spoke to literally everyone that I could on every level of this matter. Um, so I've contacted the D E C. Uh, the D E C is working, um, closely with the park owners there. Um, I spoke with G J Grow, who we're very familiar with. Um, he's been working with us, the Green Mountain Racetrack. Um, he also, ooh, you didn't put on the agenda, but I do have a tiny little update about that at some, I'll say it in public comment maybe. Um, uh, he, I spoke with, um, Scott, um, Fletcher, who also is by William Fletcher. He is the plumbing inspector for Rutland Fire and Safety. And he went down to the site on Tuesday and inspected what was going on. He, um, went to three different trailers in different locations throughout the park to see what was going on. Um. He visited the trailer of the, the most recent complainant. Uh, she wasn't there, but her husband was. Her husband showed him some. Showed him the low, the low pressure that they have and also showed him some split pipes and said that these have been frozen inside the trailer. So things that freeze inside the trailer are really not the issue of the park owner. That's the issue of the trailer owner. Um, uh, but the other two trailers also had similar water pressure issues. And so here is Scott's analysis of the situation and he is writing a report, an official report up about all of this. And is also been in communication with the park owners. Basically, there's compounded problems down in this park. Number one is when they purchased this park, they inherited a very ancient, decrepit. And not well-designed water system. The pipes are only laid two feet in the ground, which does not protect them from frost, especially when there's no snow. Um, so they're galvanized iron, they're falling apart, they're filled with grit, they're filled with. Silt, I mean, these are, this is just a, pretty much a non-functioning underground water system. Um, but on top of that situation, um, you have multiple, multiple. Uh, trailers that are not winterized. Um, the owners have not winterized them, they've not put. Um, there's no, uh, skirting, uh, there's not ample banking, there's not ample, whatever they need. Um, the park owners actually in late fall went and offered every single person there. To come and at cost to the park owners, not to the owners, to heat tape their pipes underneath the house leading from the stop. The water stop going in. Um, several of them took them up on it, but several owners refused the heat tape. Um, one of them saying they don't believe in heat tape. So. Uh, that's something that happened. Um, the park has been providing drinking water, but that doesn't help with the bathing and the washing of clothes. And that's really what Scott's main concern was. Um. So I'll get to that in a second. Um, he spoke with A one septic and sewer who's been doing all of the work as needed. Um, in these notes, I've given them to you all the dates of service. They've been going there regularly. Every time there's a problem, they fix it. There's a new well pump, there's a new well motor. Um, they've replaced several pipes. Um, and then finally, thank goodness this happened just maybe half an hour before, or an hour ago. I finally got in touch with the owners of the parks and I spoke with the asset manager and one of the owners. And they actually have just, they just found out that they have received two large funding awards, both of them from the state level of ARPA funding. And one is to connect themselves to the panel fire district number two water supply and their water operator has been working with. P F D two to make that happen. And the second one is to. They got the money to literally dig up this entire underground antiquated system and they're going to replace it in completely. So they are, they just started the design phase. They were just given this money. So the design phase is happening now. That's estimated to be thirty to forty-five days. And then it's submitted to the state for permitting. I don't believe that's local permitting because it's public utility. Um, and they can't dig till spring thaw anyway. This work can't happen. Like there's, there's not much they can do until there's a thaw. Uh, but they're hoping everything will be approved by sixty to seventy-five days. That's the hopeful timeline. And then they're going to replace this entire thing and they're going to hook in, into this other water system, which we know is a ample water source that. Provides water to a lot of people. So, um, in the interim, they are working right now and trying to get a five, five thousand gallon holding tank. Um, but they don't know that that will totally solve it because it still has to go through these collapsed pipes that. The other problem that he believes is leading to the low pressure is that people, because they're afraid of their pipes freezing, are letting the water drip. And that's placing a burden on the water system as well. Um, so I talked to the owner and I said, listen, the biggest concern here is their lack, you know, hygiene, basic hygiene. So showers and laundry, it's great, you're giving them bottled water, but, and he seemed to not understand that that was how bad it was. So he said he would love to have any suggestions that anyone has about something temporary. I wrote this at the end of my report. Maybe we could reach out to the local churches and see if they want to jump in and help somehow with. I don't know. He also thought that maybe he could bring in a used trailer and hook it up to one of the lines that he knows is working and. Install like two showers in there and maybe a couple coin-operated laundry things so people have somewhere to go and do this. Um, but it is being worked on. It is being moved forward and one of the most important things that happened, um, if you want. For me to continue to be the contact on this, I'm happy to do so, um, but. We really, all of us talked about the need for every single person who's involved in this situation that has some aspect of it, you know, at the town level. We're receiving these complaints. We hear things through the word of mouth of people, grapevine, you know. Um, for all of us to be on the same page, all of us sharing our information. So that has happened now. Um, there has been a large email chain created that has literally every pertinent agency involved. That every time we have some new piece of information, we're all going to share it with each other. So we're all updated. You don't have to reinvent the wheel a whole bunch of times. Um, lastly, I think this is lastly, the owner, um, wo- would really, they. It's a, it's a holdings group, it's called Patriot Holdings and they own twenty-five communities in New England. Um, and he said he's done a couple other, he calls this a turnaround project, really trying to turn it around. Um, he's planning to pave the roads down there. Um, he has a lot of plans and he said he'd be, he'd love to come into a meeting at some point and give you guys a short presentation about. What he's envisioning, what his plans are for down in that, in that space. And I said that would, that'd be a great idea and we can talk about that in a month or two or whenever. So that's the update. I just, you know, we need to know how to talk about it to people because people keep asking. But it's, 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 uh, it's layers and layers of complex problems, but. They are being worked on and unfortunately there are no really quick answers to this. Oh, the other thing that they've done is they have personally offered several. There is a lawsuit that they're engaged in, um, and there are a couple tenants that are kind of caught in between on that lawsuit. And they offered to those tenants because they said they feel badly that they're caught in between on that lawsuit. Um, that they've offered them, each of them several thousand dollars, like out of their own budget. To help them relocate so they can extricate themselves from the situation. And two of those tenants have taken them up on it and they've provided them with. Um, rent, security and moving expenses.
Nice. Why, what was the lawsuit about?
What was that?
Why do they drive into the lawsuit, the two tenants?
I, I'm not going to discuss the lawsuit right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just curious.
So.
Um, it's, it's a, it's a, you can look on the court docket, um, but it's a, it's a, it's a lawsuit between two unrelated parties to the town of panel. So it, we, we would not discuss it here at a public meeting.
So I think, I think with that report tonight, in a nutshell, um. Rebecca came to me with that earlier today and that's why we added it. Um, because we have been, um, there's been articles again.
Right.
You know, that, that the town isn't doing anything. Unfortunately. To a certain degree, our hands are tied with certain things, but the, the fact of the matter is. That the town has been and we've, we've had continued and constant contact. Since, at least since June, when there started the, the initial timeline. With Louise from panel of states. Now, my personal experience with her has been. Um, nothing short of great. I, I, she's very prompt to return calls. Um, she keeps us updated on, on things that are going on down there. And in my opinion, them reaching out to us to come to a board meeting, you know, Patriot Holdings. Um, with their plans, um, I, I would love to see that. I'd love to hear it, um. You know, those, those kinds of things are, are what the town needs to focus on. Um, to have. The residents of those parks in, in some better living conditions. And it sounds to me like that ownership is trying to work forward towards that.
Yeah, sounds like.
Definitely sounds that way.
Working on a positive solution, definitely.
Any questions? Any questions?
Yeah, any question, I mean, and also if you'd like me to remain kind of. You know, if this is a very liaison-y thing to do, I'm happy to continue helping organize all that. Uh, communication to make sure you guys are updated and. If you're interested, I'm happy to continue doing it.
What's more disclosure?
I'm okay with it.
I'm okay with it. Yeah, definitely. Keep, uh, keep Rebecca on it.
I, I don't think there's, yeah, I, I don't think it's going to become a, a, a really time-consuming thing. I think.
I tell you, I doesn't care. I saw that. He was like, no. Leave it for Rebecca, yeah.
I just, I think, I think as long as we have, as long as we continue to get the updates and we continue to work with people. Um. And, and then I believe we should set up, I, I keep giving you all this stuff to do after election. Um.
A time for them to come in and talk.
A time, a time for, uh, what was his name? I apologize.
Tim, his name is Tim. I'm, I, we're talking, I would have him come in after they've broken ground on that water system. Like I, I'm talking, we should wait a couple months, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like, let's see that the plans have started to come to fruition before we listen to his plans. I don't know, it's just a thought.
No, it's true. Any more comments or questions? Perfect. Um, moving to correspondence, please.
Thank you Rebecca.
Thank you Rebecca.
Very much. I'll stick around in case anyone has something else.
Um, just one super fast correspondence. It is from Julie. It's a change of date for the Brady's Clinic this year. So it is different than what was printed in the town report, um, with that, I don't think it's with that date. So the new date is March twenty-fifth, nine AM to twelve AM. And it is happening here.
Yay.
At the Newtown office, five eleven Center Street. And, and the new flyer is posted to Facebook and their website. Um, and it'll be at the stores too, I think.
Okay.
Oh, Ellen.
That's the end of our trip.
Yeah.
I would make some of those flyers and have them at town meeting too.
Good idea.
It's in low town report.
Right.
So the people that at least show up there, they can pass the word to you, because that's everybody.
Yeah, good point, thank you.
Perfect, thanks Ellen. Excess weight permits, I think we have two of those.
Two already signed by Joel. Um, this one is Renardos Inc. It's a fleet and this one is Newport Sand and Gravel Co. and Carol Concrete Co.
Make a motion.
Free permit to correct.
Fleet, yeah.
Make a motion to accept both permits.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments, all those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike, aye, we have one liquor license.
I actually have one liquor license, one tobacco license and one tobacco alternative license, all for stores.
Make a motion to accept the license, all three licenses.
I'll, I'll second.
Aided.
Any questions or comments, uh now I don't believe these have to be signed anymore, they, they're just approved by the board, okay. All those in favor, Angie? Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike, aye. Okay, so that brings us to the Friends of Pownell for a short presentation.
So I'm going to hand these out to you so we can make it shorter.
Would you just introduce you?
Yeah, my name is Karen Delise.
Thank you.
We know who you are, we all know.
Yeah. Unfortunately, I'm going to put you on the chair. Um so I just want to start by telling you that Suzanne is with me, we're in this committee together and we're actually new members of this committee, just before COVID started, the whole board switched over.
Oh, come over.
Better, yeah, please, it can be better.
Um the whole board um literally changed, so we have new members. So this board, this board, this committee has been going on since two thousand and eight. And they started by um supporting the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary of this town, I believe. And um so they were, they gave assistance to print T-shirts, mugs, commemorative calendars. I took, they, I guess, supported the time capsule and the reprint, reprinting of Joe Park's book. Um and supported a new community garden on the Bart Lodge land, did you find that out here when you were taking?
I, I don't know, um.
I don't know where.
So anyways, we, Suzanne and I joined, um were asked to join this committee in about two thousand and nineteen. And what this committee has historically done is had a candidate forums, forum evening only when there had been candidates running against each other. So this year you have nobody, there's no real um people running against, you know, contested races. So um and last year, because we were new to this committee, we just kind of did not have the momentum um to put into place um a candidate forum. But we really felt it was important that we meet with you to let you know that um we are out there, we don't have a lot of money. We did support um the town picnic, we bought lemonade um and, and cups for the day. I spoke to Mrs. Boudreaux and that's what we came up with. So we have talked to Tara a little bit about possibly when the fire department is hopefully redoing their build, thinking about redoing, doing their building that we could purchase a sign to put out so people in town would know what is going on in the community. Um so it's right there in their faces as they go up and down Route seven. And that's about it, and we meet once a year, so we're not a real big committee and we're not political, right? Not political, I mean, yeah, um so the other people are Jason Malansky, David Fail, Fole, and um Jackie Sendlock, so, yeah. Um and the committee um again has completely switched.
So you have five committee members now?
Yeah, yeah, and anybody wants to join, you're welcome.
How many did they have in the past, just curious?
I don't know.
We don't know, five, I mean, I think.
All I knew was Rose Marie.
Yeah, we had, they had Rose Marie, um Ruth Boxow. I, and there was somebody else, there's another.
I was just curious, that's all.
I mean, I went to one of those, I went to one of those meetings, it was way, it was before COVID and it seems like a five to me, but yeah, there were just the three of them and myself and David.
Yeah.
And then they, they resigned and we were all left, David and I were left holding the bag.
It didn't seem like they did many things other than like candidate.
Yeah.
Forum or whatever.
Yeah, so we were kind of holding the bag, so we asked Suzanne and Jason and Jackie to join us, so.
We were talking that we're not, um people really can't come to us for money or something, but
Right.
we, we'd like to help different groups in the town and things like that. And one of the things I heard recently is the ball field in North Pownell now is open by the town.
Yeah.
And I think it needs a lot of work, I don't think we can sponsor a team or anything like that, but we were thinking if there's a refreshment stand, we could donate something to machine equipment or something like that. That's something that we could help with.
Okay, just like that, yeah, we just want to help the town and not be political, so.
So one of the things I, one of the things I, I, you know, I'm gonna throw, I'm gonna let the board decide on this actually, is um, you know, we do have the town website.
Yeah.
So if you were to come to Tara Hannah with something, a function or something that you guys were doing, I wouldn't have a problem, you know, if you came to them and asked them to put it on our website.
Yeah.
You know, at least, at least get something out, I'm, I'm, you know, I don't know who uses it, but, but you know, whatever, five people use it, maybe five people are going to see what's going on.
Yeah.
The thing about the sign, we were thinking that it would be great to have, you know, if you drive into towns and community, and that is happening here and here and here.
No.
It's been several times, things are going on at the school that I didn't even know about. We have a sign out by the road that says, on August fifth, this is happening such and such a place.
Long as it's a great idea.
And we did, we do have a mission statement, which is at the top, I just want to make sure you see that because um David Fail was very instrumental in putting that together for us, so.
Yeah.
Um is to support and build positive community spirit through supporting effective communication and dialogue while encouraging greater citizen involvement in town activities and other nonpartisan quiet good works or a positive community spirit.
So I want to say that I think that falls into everything that.
Either working on.
We've been pushing for.
I think so.
At least the last three years that I've been here.
Yeah, you're absolutely right.
We've been pushing for that for, for a while and it falls right in place with everything else that's been happening in town. So which really, it makes me feel really good that, once again, there's another group that's coming into.
Yeah.
Town that, that wants to do the same exact thing that's going on now.
See, our concern was that this committee had been around since two thousand and eight, we never knew about, you never knew about it, I never knew about it.
Right.
Until they asked me, so we thought it was important to get our, our mission statement out there and let people know we're in town, so.
And we can apply for grants and things like that.
Yeah, that was the other thing, I had called Tara because we were going to have the forum at the school and we had to submit an insurance form, so would that be something the town would be able to cover? Like not, I, we're not going to have it this year because we have no people running against.
Talking about the candidate forum.
Yeah, so you have to have an insurance first, you have to, you know, kind of come off of another, I mean, we could get um event insurance for one day. But that would be something that we would come to the board to ask.
Is it the town practice that we have um done that?
You have done that for things that revolve around the town, yeah, okay.
It's, uh, I just wanted to ask, well, one is I do appreciate the work that you do. Um uh and I think it's, it's part of that is the, the annual cleanup, that's always.
Yeah, that's important.
But I do want to ask, uh, I mean, do you have any plans to be a five oh one three C? The one thing, the one thing that I'm concerned about is offering town resources and taxpayer, and taxpayer.
We already are, Bob, we already are.
Uh taxpayer resource, well, but, are you, so you're saying you are a five.
Yes, yes, the people in two thousand and eight applied for that and every year we renew that. So when this committee started with the original members, they started the um nonprofit certificate process.
Right, and, and, and the only thing I'm concerned about is, is that, you know, it was a great presentation, um uh uh but we shouldn't be subjectively deciding.
No.
Website or, or, uh, or insurance or those kinds of things, there has, we, we need to make sure that everything's, you know, dot our i's, cross our t's.
Yep.
And that it's, that it's not just that we think this is a good organization, it can't be subjective, it has to be, it has to be, it has to meet whatever our minimum criteria is.
So when I come to the board for that request, I will make sure I bring our certificate for the, for the nonprofit.
And we're not asking you for any money.
No, we're not asking you for any money.
We're not asking for any help.
No, the two things that I heard was uh announcement on the town website and potentially asking for insurance in the future.
No, no.
No, that, I.
Can I clarify some, can I clarify that? It used to be when we did a forum at the school and that school is owned by the town, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, the school's owned by the Southwest Vermont district.
You still go to Linda at the school and ask for a certificate of insurance from her?
No, no, you get the application from her, you have to get the insurance, the certificate insurance, but insurance from your insurance agent. Because we're not a group that has insurance, so to speak, we don't, we would have to buy like an event insurance, which is just.
I wonder, I wonder how they did it.
But I think in the past, the, the town did supply an insurance.
So that was because we.
We owned it.
We owned the building.
We don't anymore.
So SBS, you. Would I have to, would I go up there and get it from them? You would have to probably go to the central office and see what would happen.
Okay, that's good to know.
Now, the law can't do that anymore.
Right, because we don't know.
Control over.
Because I think there's other events over there that go on.
Yeah, they're costing for anybody to pass, it is a school.
Yeah.
Not just us.
Yeah, when we um scheduled the town meeting, we had to provide our insurance amount too. Yeah, yeah, it is, I had to always provide for the schools, yeah, for the school.
Just to clarify, Bob, we're not here asking for anything worth or.
No, actually, Mike is the one who rec- recommended the website.
Well, anything that.
I, I do realize.
Yeah, I mean, I, we're just supporting the community, so we don't, we don't want anything, we're just going to, we want to help people.
Any, any community event, and I believe that's where Mike was going with the website.
Yeah.
We're, we're, we're community minded.
Yeah.
You know, and that's the thing, it's, you gotta get the information out of the community, isn't going to show up.
That's right.
Yeah.
You're right, can be part of the, feel, part of the community.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, any other questions at all?
I don't have any.
Okay, thank you so much for.
Thanks for coming in.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Good to see you, Susan.
Smalls, did you guys go? Huh? Did you say good to see them too? Yes. Now we have our new librarian.
Yeah.
I could have said.
Okay. Um so we're on to the Solomon Wright Library new director introduction.
Damien, would you like to join us?
Come up.
Steph brought it up.
And I need to apologize, you, you sent me an email and I never responded to it, it's at that time, I'm not going to lie.
I'm incredibly upset.
And I apologize.
No worries at all, um thanks for hosting me, everybody, I'm Damien, I'm the new librarian over at the Solomon Wright. Library, um I'm, I'll keep it brief, to the point, I'm just here to introduce myself, basically. About this time last year, my wife and I were moving from Philadelphia to uh South Philly, if you guys have been to see the Liberty Bell or Constitution, okay, that's not where we live. We lived uh more like, you think like rocky, running past fifty gallon barrels, flames, yeah, it was that kind of area. So we, it's been a big culture shock, but um it's wonderful, we're delighted. I have to apologize to you because I don't live on Pownell, we did our best, but um I lived in Shaftesbury, it took a while, we finally found a place. I just wanted to introduce myself, I also wanted is to let you know some of the things that I've been up to. Uh I spent yesterday afternoon with um uh Principal Lorge over at Pownell Elementary. For a little bit, was there for the staff meeting, after the faculty. Looking for partnerships with them, like maybe some after school programs, kind of something, kind of to get kids over, over the library, honestly, so that they know what it is or where it is, um but also to get them kind of acquainted with some of what we have to offer. Um so I've been doing that, um I'm looking for also if, if, uh, I'd, I'd also like to get more events in the library too, if I can. We closed for uh the pandemic and then we opened up, we've been without a director for about seven or eight months now. Um I've been there for two months, um so we're trying to get everything revamped, we used to have a book club and a poetry club and a quilting club. I'm trying to get all of that happening again. Um but if you guys have any ideas, um I should talk to Karen, who's one of our volunteers, um about the Friends of Pownell, but looking for events to, anything to kind of bring folks in. Um we already do some playgroups, which are amazing, um and you can probably hear from this building, those kids are enthusiastic. I'm trying to expand our hours over the next year, I'd like to be open five days instead of three and a half, um which is, just not enough. Um and I guess the other thing I should, I should let you guys know, um and I just got two other things and then I'll wrap up. But is um my other job at the community outreach for the Bennington Museum. So I've interviewed, uh, or talked with um just about every social service agency I can think of in the Southern Vermont area. So we're really trying, both institutions have sort of a similar mission, um really trying to expand our, our, our reach to become a more vital force um in, really in the, in the Southern Vermont area. So that's something we'd like to, to develop um at the library. I don't know if you guys got a chance to read the thank you letter I wrote, uh I know it was a little long, but um the kernel of that is this year, what we're trying to do, I swear to God, I won't bother you, but this is too much, it gets a little inside baseball, but we're trying to expand into the um local library consortium system, which is called Catamount. Um it'll be a force multiplier for our capacities in the community, basically allow in our library alone to um get access much more easily, much more quickly to all our patrons. So it'll kind of be like you go to our museum website, library website, excuse me, and you'll see everything that's available in all dozen libraries in the area, Bennington free, huge range. Um so we're trying to get that, it's going to cost some money, I'm looking at um starting a capital campaign for that. We do like small dollar donations via QR code PayPal at the circulation desk. Um I'm also trying to draw in a lot of grant money as I can from, through ARPA and the, from my Department of Libraries, um and the American Library Association, there's, there's money out there that we're trying to draw in for that. The other thing that I'm interested in, I talked about, this with Principal Lorge was um, and this is something, as I've talked to other social service agencies and, and you know, the YMCA and the schools, the issues that persist are, are, are many, but the one that keeps coming up is transportation. So I'm trying to figure out a way to um make it easier for kids from the school to come to the library, um or even from a skate park out here to come over to the library, if anybody has any ideas about that, I would love to work with you on that. So the last thing I want to tell you is that uh we're looking for volunteers. So uh if you have a whole lot of spare time in your life, um reach me. Uh actually, you don't know how to reach me, but here, here is how to reach me, uh pownpub at gmail, at P O W N A L P U B at gmail, will go right to the um inbox email. Um and if you haven't been over there since, uh you know, in the last three or four months, you really need to see the library, it's quite amazing. It's a much different place, my predecessor, uh or the outgoing board chair, Mary, Mary Alisia did amazing things. It's really quite remarkable, we have a new board chair now, um Jim Bhutan, uh doing amazing things, keeping us uh in a very, uh a lot of pretty sharp fiscal responsibilities, so I think it's going to be, going to be a new day. And um we're on a balanced budget, which we're happy about. Any questions I can answer you guys, any, any queries at all?
I think uh, uh I guess for the volunteer thing, I'd like to volunteer my wife. In reality.
Just already, yes, yeah, that, that's true, Anne Marie is one of our, one of our most valued volunteers because she comes out on Saturday, which is a true, true dedication.
That was, that was going to be a question I had for you, um do you offer, and I'm sure you do, do you offer evening hours for?
We're open until six.
Okay.
Um I know that Jim and Richard Graham's other trustee are interested in doing music classes and I think those would probably have to be after hours, um I think that's a fantastic idea, I, I love that idea.
I was just thinking for people that, you know, need, need to use the library, that work in out of, out of town, that have.
I could not sympathize with you more, I absolutely agree, I would love to expand the hours, you know, I, but I often, especially being open two hours on Saturday, I mean, if you're open, any business that's open, or any institution that's open for two hours, it's kind of making a demand uh more than offering a service, so I'd love to expand that. Big part of what I'm doing is trying to get volunteers in so that we can do that. Um I am part-time, um so I, I do have some limitations on how often, oh sorry, I've got a job, um had a family. So I, I'm a little bit limited, but I am trying to expand our hours, I know that's really crucial for people.
Can I send these with you, please?
Yeah, thank you, oh great, terrific. Okay.
I think you may.
Can I read this later?
Oh yeah, definitely. You may have one copy down there.
I think, yes, I do, I do, this is great, thank you very, very much. Yeah, hours is a real thing.
Well, one thing not to overlook also, uh not to seal any thunder, but uh they also have a really excellent wifi. I know it's saved me at a couple of, a couple of times when we had power outages, I was, uh the library was closed, but I was in my truck parked in there. parked in their parking lot with my laptop in my lap, uh, trying to get work done. So, uh, uh, really come down for the wifi. It's a, it, the, the renovations are complete down there. Um, I know that's been a while. It's been a, a year, year and a half, or maybe even two years. Uh, time went by pretty quick during COVID. But, uh, um, uh, yeah, so the renovations are fantastic. I mean, it, it, it's a nice, it's a nice facility.
Thank you. I, I, I have to credit Mary with that, who, uh, yeah, did really amazing things, but thank you. Thanks. Yeah, it looks, looks pretty, looks pretty great.
Anybody having more questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for.
I'm sure, I'm sure that you talked with Beth about transportation.
Yeah. I'm gonna work something out. Let's just stop in the room.
Thanks, guys.
Large Gathering Permit Application, P twenty seven.
Well, Paul was definitely on the meeting at one point.
He was poor, Paul, been waiting this whole time?
Thanks for hanging out, Paul.
Hey, guys, can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right. So I was hoping it would work. Um, I just wanna thank you guys again for last year, just a, uh, over at, uh, O'Donovan's Pit, just turned out great. Um, I was hoping, uh, hoping I didn't hear any negative responses. Um, sorry I couldn't be there today, um, but it was, uh, turned out really well last year. Uh, it was just a great, great, uh, outcome for all the kids. Um, we do a Stasi Race on Saturday as well for the kids, um, and so that was awesome. Um, and, yeah, just looking to see, uh, about the, uh, Large Gathering Permit, and that would be, um, the June third and fourth again, with the same, um, same exact layout, if that works for everybody else. I applied for that, oh, I believe it was, uh, earlier this year I applied for that, um, Large Gathering Permit at O'Donovan's Pit.
And he is, um, coming earlier this time, so that if there is an issue with, or anything, can change it in his advertising and be prepared for that.
I don't believe we had any negative stuff from last time.
I didn't hear any.
Yeah, I didn't hear any this time.
I know I went down there a couple of times myself, and things were, nobody was racing up and down the roads or anything like that, so. I mean, I heard mostly positive stuff.
Yeah, last year you came in with all of your paperwork in order. It was a hundred percent, uh, you, and it was a nice event. It brings something to Pownell that, uh, uh, that brings a lot of enjoyment, brings some entertainment, um, and, and gives kids something to do. I, I, I think this has been a really nice event year over year. And Paul, I know you've been out here several years with this, and it's always a good event.
Yep. No, I really enjoy it, you know, just working with the town. That's why I wanted to try and get in early. And, um, I, I was, you know, kind of looking to see what I'm doing here, you know, it's, people in the town love it so much. Everybody wants to have a race. And with that said, um, Joe Strohmeier approached me as well, and I went up and looked at the property up there, um, you know, the, the exit in and out on his road up there at, uh, he's on Strohmeier Road. It's a, it's another event that he was looking for as well, and I haven't applied for the Large Gathering Permit. But I was hoping it was something that we could do up there on April thirtieth, um, just, uh, just adding a little extra to the town and seeing if we could make that work as well.
And what would that be from, like, eight in the morning to four?
Yep, that would be just a one day. That would be, uh, Sunday only, so that would be eight in the morning till four o'clock in the afternoon, yes. And I, you know, I sent a message to, um, I sent a message to Becky over at the Pownell Rescue Squad, um, just checking on that one as well. So I'll, uh, you know, follow through with that and then see if I need to do anything else with you guys, but I will apply for that Large Gathering Permit, um, for Joe's place as well.
I got, I got one question on this one you have here, Paul.
Yep.
Um, last year, Saturday, the eleven PM, didn't we have it, uh, uh, did we go to eleven or did we go to ten last year?
Uh, we went to eleven o'clock. That's when we ended it. So we ended it before, um, we wanted to try and stay on track with you guys and, you know, uh.
Right, right. I knew we had discussion on it. I just couldn't remember what time, that's all. Okay.
Yep. Yeah, cause it just considered it, well, I consider it a night race, and, you know, we try to keep all the, uh, keep everybody in the dark, I guess, is what, what we're kind of trying to do, and that's why eleven o'clock actually worked better for the stop time.
Yeah, no, I, I just, I couldn't remember if we, if, I, I know there was discussion about it, that's all. I just wanted to, I just wanted to stay consistent.
Yep, no, thank you.
With that. So let's do these, um. What's the board's question on this one?
Make a motion to accept the Large Gathering Permit for June third and fourth, twenty three, and.
And I'd still have to apply for that, April, uh, the, yeah, April thirtieth race as well. So I haven't applied for you. I wanted to make sure I got your blessing first.
Well, we can't add the motion yet, though.
Okay.
And you can just send that to me when you have it done.
Yes, I will. Thank you.
Well, I'm not, I'm not so sure that we didn't have that on the agenda.
Oh, did we?
Talking about the April thirtieth one. We have this one on the agenda.
Yeah.
It wasn't, it wasn't on the agenda, no.
Right, that's why I always, I stopped my motion.
Could've added it before, but I don't think we should talk about that one.
Right.
Yeah, I think you should wait until you have.
Other than to say, turn in an application, we'll discuss it then.
Exactly.
Yep.
Unfortunately.
I agree.
So, uh, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
For the P twenty seven Large Gathering Permit for June third, June fourth.
Yes.
Um, through Paul. Uh, any more questions, comments? All those in favor, Angie?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike, aye. Thank you, Paul. You have this one known.
Okay, excellent. And Tara, I'll send you the, uh, I'll send you the Large Gathering Permit, and, you know, with, uh, Joe, I'll have him sign it as well. We'll go through that way. And I just wanna say thank you guys again for, uh, just, uh, letting me host another race up there again. It's always a great time. So you guys got a great town.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks for waiting so long.
Uh, no problem. I, I love hearing all the different, uh, different avenues of the town, so.
Yeah, it's gonna be interesting, that's for sure.
Yeah. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, bye now.
Bye.
Okay, um, public comment. Anybody have their hands up? Tara? Or Hannah, sorry.
I don't see any hands.
No hands up?
No hands up.
I'll entertain a motion with Jen.
So moved.
Seconded.
Uh, any discussion, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Jamie?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Brian?
Aye.
Mike, aye. Thank you, everyone.
You're gonna have Paul comment over there.
Thank you.